All right, we're going to call the Murfreesboro City Council our regular meeting workshop. It's April 13th, 2022. It's 11:37. If you will, if you'll bow with me and then we'll stand and do our pledge of allegiance. Father, we come to you today and ask for your guidance. We ask for you to give us wisdom in decisions that we have to make that affect not only our community but our entire county. Lord, give us the ability to be able, Lord, just to make the right decision. We pray for all those that have spoken and unspoken prayers. We continue to lift up the Tate family and, Lord, we just thank you for what you're doing in this community. We live in a blessed community and we attribute that to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move. You have your agenda in front of you. You have ordinance 22007. This is a fiscal year 22 budget amendment. Aaron.
Thank you. I guess this amendment is to fund the one-time transfer to schools for the bonuses that council approved at last week's meeting. In addition, there are additional revenues and expenses related to golf and drug fund included. So overall, the impact will decrease the general fund unassigned fund balance by $820,000 and increase drug fund revenues by 40.
Any questions, Sarah? I have a motion.
So, I mean, I will.
Motion. A second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have a subscription renewal of enterprise online services. This is IT. Mr. Jarrett, how are you?
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, City Council. IT is requesting a renewal of the city's enterprise agreement with Microsoft with an annual expense totaling around 430K. This is a three-year agreement that covers licensing for city--
Recording in progress.
Did you do that?
I did not.
Now you know, though.
So, this is a three-year agreement that covers licensing for city email, Microsoft Office, and Windows, and it's funded out of the IT and water resources operating budgets. This new agreement will also add licensing for Microsoft's Enterprise Mobility and Security Suite, which includes multi-factor authentication and single sign-on.
Any questions for Mr. Jarrett?
I'll move for approval.
That's a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to workshop items. Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. The first item you have is development impact fees.
Mayor, while Carson's coming to the mic, you'll recall that we did a review of development impact fees a while ago, and council asked for additional information, which that was gathered, the information was gathered and analyzed. And so, Carson is, Tishler-Beese is back. Carson's back to go over the information that you requested and update us on development impact fees.
Thank you, Craig. Mayor, members of council, I'm Carson, Vice President of Tishler, Vice. If you recall, we did discuss impact fees about a year ago, I believe it was, and then we were asked to add on public safety, schools to the study. A little bit about us to keep you up to speed. We do specialize in impact fees, fiscal and economic impact analysis. We've done more of that kind of work than anybody in the country, based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. Just to refresh your memory, impact fees are one-time payments designed to offset growth-related infrastructure. If you remember, we can't use the impact fees to subsidize operations, use them for maintenance or replacement or rehabilitation. It's not a tax, it's a fee. It's important to note that because I go to many city council meetings where someone refers to impact fees as a tax on new development. And as you well know, taxes are revenue-raising in nature, and a fee is typically designed to cover the cost of something. With impact fees, it's a little more stringent. We have to meet three legal tests. One is the need or nexus, which is part of the impact fee analysis. We have to show the community's growing. That growth's going to generate the need for infrastructure. We have to show benefit. We show that two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, meaning that we just don't collect the money, sit on it 10, 15, 20 years. We have to spend it within a reasonable period of time, so the fee payer receives a benefit. And then we also show benefit from a geographic perspective. Typically, don't have to get into that in a city the size of Murfreesboro. It's typically reserved for larger cities, larger counties, if you will. The idea here is that we don't collect money in the south and then build infrastructure in the north, for which that fee payer receives no benefit. And the impact fee systems or the infrastructure categories that we calculated for Murfreesboro are citywide in nature, and we don't get into any of the benefit issues. And then finally, we have to show proportionality, which is why you'll see the fees done by type of residential unit and type of non-residential activity, because all land uses have different indicators of demand relative to the infrastructure. If you remember from our previous work session, there are really three ways to think about fees in terms of the calculation methodologies. We can look to the past, and that's for oversized facilities. For instance, if you recently built a public safety center and we're going to pay off the debt service, we're going to collect new growth's fair share of that to pay for that oversized infrastructure. There's the consumption-based method or incremental expansion, which is based on the present, meaning that we take a snapshot of where the city is in terms of existing levels of service. For example, the number of park acres per person, what does it cost us to buy an acre of land? What does it cost us to improve it? That's an example of the consumption-based approach. And then the plan-based approach looks to the future. It's usually used for utilities and roads or for infrastructure where there's an adopted master plan. And more importantly, an adopted funding plan, because we have to identify the growth shares and then show how the non-growth shares are going to be funded through other revenue sources. We also have to evaluate the need for credits, and credits are required because we need to ensure that new development doesn't pay twice, once through the impact fee and then again through, oops, another form of revenue, whether that is existing or future debt service, or if you have a dedicated, for instance, local option sales tax that goes to fund parks. For instance, that would be an example of a revenue source that we would have to look at in terms of giving credit within the methodology itself. And then we also have to guard against development projects coming in the door and proffering or donating infrastructure for which the fee is being paid. So, for instance, if a developer comes in the door and you have a park impact fee and they're donating land that truly is for system-wide improvements, that would have to be structured in the development agreement, so the developer is made whole. If you remember, the original study included both parks and recreation and streets, and we've walked you through those. So I'm going to focus really on the scope add-ons, which were fire, police, and schools. To summarize the growth, we'd have updated it to 2021. Originally, we started in 2020, so we were using 2019 as the base. We are projecting a population increase of approximately 51,100 people over the next 10 years. The amount of K through six school enrollment is projected to increase approximately 3,220 additional students. We are projecting an increase of about 15,700 new single-family units and an increase of about 5,200 multifamily units. And from a non-residential perspective, employment increase of about 6,650 jobs, and that results in an increase of about 3.9 million square feet of non-residential activity. And turning to the police fee, the three components are the actual bricks and mortar station space, and we are using the cost recovery method for that, since it was recently constructed and has excess capacity. We're using that consumption-based approach for new police vehicles. And then we have the cost of the impact fee study rolled into that as well. Costs were allocated to both residential and non-residential development. And a summary of the projected demand is 12.6 million in actual cost recovery for the police station. That's the growth share. And then 75 additional vehicles at a cost of about $4.2 million. And this summarizes the police impact fee. The top part of the table summarizes the different cost components per person and per vehicle trip. The single-family fee is proposed at $487, followed by, I think, $359 for multifamily. And commercial development has the highest police fee per thousand square feet at about $1,197, followed by institutional, office flex space, and then industrial flex space at the lowest. In terms of the fire fee, the components are station space, and we're using that consumption-based method again. Same method is used for apparatus, and the cost of the impact fee study is also included. Costs are allocated again to residential and non-residential development. And we do have a credit for future debt payments, because that's likely how you will fund stations in the future. And the 10-year demand is projected at 28,882 square feet at a cost of 12.2 million. Now, the city could choose to build 40 million in additional space over the next 10 years. However, the growth share would only be the 28 or almost 29,000. Anything else would represent an elevation in the level of service. Growth is projected to demand 20 additional pieces of apparatus. The estimated cost of that's about 8.4 million. Same situation exists. You could choose to buy 25 pieces of apparatus. The growth share would be 20. The draft fire fee is $743 per single-family unit, 547 for multifamily units. From a non-residential perspective, commercial, again, or retail space has the highest fee at $487 per thousand, followed by institutional, office, and industrial. And finally, the school component. It is K through six classroom space. It includes a land component, a bus maintenance facility component, and the cost of the actual buses, as well as the cost of the impact fee study. Largely across the country, school impact fees are uniformly calculated using that consumption-based approach. Same thing, that's the method we used here in Murfreesboro. The costs are allocated only to residential development. We do have credits for future debt payments. And the 10-year demand is estimated at about 3,226 new students and a cost of $65.5 million in growth-related capacity needs. This shows the projection of school capacity needs if nothing were constructed. And you can see here that in FY 2021, the utilization rate is about 91%. And as you can appreciate, the amount of time it takes to identify land, identify funding sources, and actually get a school constructed, it's about a three-year process in most communities. And so, you are approaching an undesirable situation, if you will, in terms of your ratio of capacity to enrollment. And if no additional school capacity were constructed over the next 10 years, you would find yourself at a utilization rate of about 124%. This summarizes the draft school impact fee. You know, this is the building cost per student, the land cost per student, the bus maintenance cost per student, as well as the cost of buses. The proposed fee is $3,448, I believe, for a single-family unit and $2,005 for a multifamily And this shows the, sort of the full freight, if you will, if the city were to adopt the proposed parks and recreation, streets, police, schools, and fire impact fee. The total cost would be $10,734 for a single-family unit, $7,463 for a multifamily unit. Commercial would pay $4,980 per thousand square feet. Institutional would be $3,833 per thousand, followed by office at $1,912 per thousand and industrial flex at $974 per thousand. And finally, it's always helpful, or we find that most city councils want to see, you know, if they were to adopt 100% of the maximum supportable fee, how do you compare against communities in the region? As you can see here, the City of Franklin has the highest impact fee structure of any of the cities. You may be familiar with our school impact fee for Williamson County, which is quite high. I think it's about $12,000 per single-family unit, but we kept counties out of this. If you adopted the full freight, you would be the second highest in the region at $10,735. Nolanville is close behind. As you can see here, Brentwood and Smyrna also have significant fee structures. And as you can see here, Spring Hill has the lowest. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I got a question for you. On your assumption of what type of housing you want to have for a single-family, does that change what the proposed fee would be?
Good question.
If the percentage would be different?
So, the way that most of the fees are calculated, the projection of development doesn't really influence the fee amount, because so many of the fees are calculated using the consumption-based approach, which is based on, well, what do we have on the ground today? What's our population today? What's our employment base today? It does affect the cost recovery, projection of how much revenue you would get on the police station. It doesn't affect the fee amount. It does affect slightly the fee amount on the, oh, it doesn't. There is no plan-based. So, yeah, so any impact is de minimis.
You assume that 25% of the doors that are coming in the next 10 years are going to be apartments. If we assume 10% of the doors, or if we assume 40% of the doors, it won't change what each proposed fee would be?
No. And if you did adopt an impact fee program, especially as growing as fast as you all are, you know, you should be updating that within the five-year period of your CIP. And so, any demographic shifts would be certainly taken into account during that next update.
Is this budget, it's proposed, as if new growth paid for 100% of the infrastructure that you're looking at?
Yes and no. If you remember what I've mentioned, you know, what we tried to do with the consumption-based approach is we take those levels of service standards, and I'm just going to make it up here, that let's just say it's, you know, two acres, two park acres per thousand, right? We then apply that to, here's the projected population increase over the next 10 years, to get an idea of, well, if growth were to continue at this pace, if you want to maintain current levels of service, we project you'd have to build X number of park acres, right? And so, you may choose to build more than that. It's just that growth's only going to pay for a certain amount of that. Does that make sense?
We're figuring that the impact fee would handle the majority of that as opposed to now, where we're using some debt in the general fund.
Right.
So, we need to balance and look at what that, you know, because I think it would be beneficial for the council to also see, I see Valerie back there, but when you look at that total number, what if you add water and sewer caps in there? If you add county impact fee and other associated governmental fees, what's that total number? My guess is it's probably close to $20,000 if you--
Probably, maybe more, yeah.
Do those other business penalties have those things, those things, though? I mean, you know--
Yeah, in this comparison, these are only non-utility impact fees. It's very difficult to do an apples-to-apples with utilities, because some cities are providing, some aren't, but they've got other entities that are providing, and they may or may not have connection fees or impact fees or whatever you want to call it.
On the residential portion, we had mentioned something about a proportional rate, like by square footage. Was that looked at at all, or does that's something we have to look at going forward?
Well, if you remember, we had a second work session where we showed options one and two for the parks and recreation and streets fees by size of unit. My notes indicate that there was a lot of discussion about whether the tiers were, whether you wanted to go that direction, whether the tiers were fair, whether it would, you know, encourage smaller units and discourage larger units. And so, we just prepared this using the one-size-fits-all, meaning just single-family, multifamily. We could certainly do that with the others, but my notes indicate you guys really weren't that interested in pursuing that.
Shane's question, does it cover just the capital cost? It doesn't take into account like the tail cost of employing the people who are out there and work at the--
Exactly.
Fire hall or at the park or wherever. This is just the--
Just the capital. Yep.
I got one more. So, if we said, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. If we just pick any one of those, we could just pick any one of those and say, hey, we want to just do this one. Wait, yeah, sorry. Yeah. So, we could just go through and pick either parks, streets, police, school, fire, and say, here's what it's going to be, you know, just picking the middle one there, police. There's going to be an impact fee for police, and it's going to be $490 for this, $361 for this, and that's the end of it?
Yes. So you have the discretion to pick and choose which fees you want to implement. You also have the discretion to implement at lower amounts. So you may decide to, you know, only adopt 50% of the parks fee. But caveat is, there's still that demand, so you're going to have to come up with 50% of the revenue for somewhere else in order to make the program whole, so to speak.
So, I guess part of the thing I had in mind about kind of police and fire in particular, and on top of the question about the infrastructure, the capital piece of this, you know, police, I guess I would say especially, basically one building, right? I mean, there's not a whole lot of capital. I mean, does that include things like equipment and all that kind of stuff?
Includes vehicles, a fully outfitted vehicle.
Yeah, good, okay. So, all right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Correct any analysis?
Yeah, we'll make sure we have this. And I think what we'll do as far as the next step, of course, we can have any discussion we want now if there's any more questions, but have this as an item for our retreat and maybe dig a little bit more into that and see where council wants to go with it, and we can decide how to next bring it back to council, if that's all right.
All right, we'll move to Broad Street redevelopment.
Thank you, Carson.
Hello, my name is Bart Klann with Klann Swinney Associates. See if I can--
Go ahead, Bart, do that.
We can't control anymore.
Here the mobility state.
Hold on here. Sorry, it's hard for me to see the small writing. So I'm here today to present Broad Street Development. This is a proposed development that we've been working with the city on. This is a complicated, integrated project that takes public and private and blends them together to really do a gentrification, rejuvenation of what you guys know as Broad Street and really the city hall. And just to get you, this is just a massing model, show density and proposed site. But before I get into the details, I want to present the team and let them talk a little bit. But this is just a matrix to show that, you know, we're working with the city on this. They're kind of the governing agency. I'm Bart Klann of Klann Swinney Associates. I'm a principal in the firm. We have a design team, planners, architects. Everything will be under us from engineering, and I'm going to turn it over to HRP Service, who's a development team.
Good morning. My name's Dean Montgomery. I'm one of the partners for HRP Residential. We would be the primary development partner in this. We are based in Brentwood, Tennessee. We are a commercial developer, and we do projects from just south of Louisville, Kentucky, into Huntsville, Alabama. So, anyhow, as I said, we're in Brentwood. Let's see. I've got with me Ryan Little, who's also one of our partners, and Rob Turner, who's head of construction. So, we're the, we would be the overall primary developer in this case. So, anyway, thank you.
And I'm going to, I'm used to doing this all the time, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about HRP. So they are doing mixed use, do mixed use, and they are funding this project fully. So you guys will be dealing directly with them, and I'll be acting as the designer with the city and on their project to make everything kind of balance and work together. The work you're going to see today is really accumulation of probably, I don't know, a dozen meetings of looking at what the needs were, what the infrastructure is, what, and this goes back, a lot of this work goes back to the Bottoms Study, which was done, what, 10 years ago, maybe? 2017. So really growing off of that study to how we get to a development. Proposed mixed-use projects. This is a mixed-use. We're looking at apartments, up to 340 units, a boutique hotel, 40 to 60 keys, retail square footage, 30 to 40,000, condominium units up to 25. And then everything is self-parked on the site. So we're looking at structured parking, so for every use. If it's a restaurant, if it's mercantile, whatever it is, it'll be parked on-site. And we're just concerned, as concerned about the parking as you guys are, because developments don't work without proper parking. Right now, this is where we are with the site plan. Again, this is probably the third iteration of where we've been. And I'll hit on a couple things. I'm going to let Sam talk about the public items. But we're looking at multiple buildings. The purple is a hotel component. The pink and the orange are residential and retail components. This hatched area right here and right here is showing retail at the ground floor. And then these white boxes in the center are multi-level parking structures. So we're screening the parking to create that walkable environment. And we are, and there's an MOU that's, we're working on. I think it's going back and forth between attorneys, which is talking about how we're going to work with the city to develop a plan for this site. It also includes the site across the street, that we look at that as well as development As you guys understand, the complications and how busy Broad Street is, this is, you know, to orient you, here's the city hall. Everybody know where they are on this? All right, city hall. But looking at revising these two intersections, a pedestrian bridge, the city is in the process of working on the design on the park. So there's a lot of different elements that play to pull this off. So I'm going to let Sam talk about the public elements.
Thank you, Bart. Mayor, council, just a quick look back. Bart referenced the Highland, I'm sorry, the Bottoms redevelopment plan as a part of that project. Three big ideas were brought forward from that public engagement, design engagement, and city staff and mayor and council plan commission engagement, and they included a realignment of the intersection of Vine and Front, signaling that intersection, a pedestrian bridge across Broad Street, and then also the daylighting of Town Creek. In addition to those elements that came from the Bottoms Study, adding a right-turn lane, dedicated right-turn lane from the city hall civic plaza parking garage is a public element that we envision would be included in this project. And so, right now, the MOU includes having the design and development team be responsible for the work in the intersection of Vine and Front, the pedestrian bridge, and the improvements on South Church Street from the parking garage down to the intersection at Broad Street. That would be part of the balance of public investment and private investment, but having them responsible for those elements as far as design and construction and tying that back to the construction of their project, it helps them manage the construction, the impact, and the activities around their job site versus the city trying to coordinate a couple of projects with them. So we thought that would be a much better approach. Now, Town Creek's a little bit different animal, and so what you see here is really, you know, just a conceptual idea of what that might look like. The spacing is right. The Town Creek, this is phase two that we see, going from Church Street to Front Street. You might recall that we've proposed phase two as a American Recovery Plan Act project to be funded from the funds that are available from that. We have a design team working on a concept design, that's Reagan Smith and Griggs and Maloney. And we also have an appraisal team working on property acquisition, because this will require a significant property acquisition effort as well. And that would be a separately-- And that would be a separately funded and permitted and built project by the city. But I think what you'll hear from the design team and from city staff is providing that open space and providing that green space with this increase in density and activity is very important to the livability and walkability and really was a major element of the Highlands, I'm sorry, the Bottoms Redevelopment Plan. So city staff's available after Bart finishes his presentation. We have several of the folks that have participated here. Between us and the design team, we'll be glad to take on any questions. But just wanted to give you that couple-minute background on the public infrastructure.
Bart?
And just to talk a little bit about the proposed, I'm gonna, if I can zoom this in some. So very much, we're looking at, and we're early in the process, we go back and forth. We're talking walk-up units where we're activating the ground, plazas off the street. We've set these buildings back far off of the existing curb line. We don't want to be right up on it. We want to be far enough back to where you can have the street life and everything you need, and then to handle any future infrastructure that has to go in. But just to orient you again, this, we have trash service, for instance, over here. We're tucking it back. We have trash service for this building over here. Right now, we're showing a hotel component right here with a dedicated drop-off. You would have access to the parking structure right here and then access to this parking structure right here. Along Broad, you have two entry points in the development. This entry point would probably be your main entry point where you would come in. We see the ground floor of roughly 180 to 200 parking spaces being primarily retail. And then putting everybody that's living, if you're in a condo, if you're in a hotel or something like that, you're up above, which gives them kind of what they need and also gives the retail what it demands. We see restaurants, you know, some successful restaurants coming at these points. But yes, very indicative of a typical mixed-use project that is engaging the street and trying to pervade, create some connections into the downtown of Murfreesboro. We'll move on to another slide. These, I'll tell you, my team has been sketching, I think these were done last night, so this is like the third iteration. We just keep on going. These are gonna evolve. We haven't been to planning yet. We're bringing this to you so you get an understanding of what the project is. But I'll go through kind of what this is. But this orange building right here, if I look at that triangle, is an elevation of what's along this street. And, you know, what you're seeing is the first floor retail tucked underneath with a colonnade. It sits up, you walk underneath the building. Primarily masonry, you know, we're looking at, we're one, visited the city of Franklin. Everybody went and looked at the Harpeth Square Development downtown. It's very indicative to that, trying to play off some of the architecture that's already in place in Murfreesboro, but really wanting to create a product that is a legacy product because it's a gateway into your downtown. But this elevation is along Vine Street. As we move over to Vine, onto the corner of Vine and Broad, that would be the retail and then residential up above, some large glass element, bringing some arches in, balconies in. And then as we move, what's a little nut, this elevation, I don't know what my guys did, but this elevation is actually this elevation right here, to where again, the retail stops and then you have the walk-ups for the units. You're getting the walk-ups off the street, some since that is a busy street. And with the park going in, it should be even busier. And then having some rooftop elements, just to really activate. And then as we move off of, so we've gone over this elevation, this elevation, this elevation, as we move over to this elevation, you can start seeing how the, you know, primarily residential in nature, walk-ups at every units, entry into the parking structure, lobby space of some sort. And then moving on, it's that same language as you go down. And then, so that puts us right here. And when we get right here, we have a plaza connection and then we start another building. And let's see here, this building is, he was working, this one was, again, working late at night. Okay, so I'm gonna start here and let's start at this elevation, picking back up at the plaza space. So this elevation is walk-ups, some type of balcony up above, and then as you turn the corner, you start facing where the pedestrian park or pedestrian bridge and the park element is going to be, you have all the retail picking up, but something that fronts like this and we're picking up a, you know, kind of a more traditional architecture, the other kind of has a Sullivan-esque approach. This is a little more heavy, traditional. But colonnade, retail. And then, as we turn the corner again, if I'm saying too much or going too fast, you guys tell me. If I turn the corner right here again and I go down this street, then we can kind of see how it goes from the retail. We have walk-ups and then we have the hotel with, and we're looking, with a boutique hotel is what we're talking about. We're, a flag in our opinion is probably not the right move because it brings all this other stuff and it really kind of diminishes the character of, you know, flags, in my opinion, are meant for what's by the interstate, not a downtown setting. But a boutique hotel with a main entry, this would take you into a large shared lobby that would get you the parking structure in the back, but also take you to the amenity space for the residential. And we see this space right here. We haven't programmed the first floor, you know, the developer that's into this and the partner on this that's doing the boutique hotel, they don't need, they don't know yet if it's really, if Murfreesboro is causing for an event venue, an art studio, but something on that ground floor that goes with the hotel elements to really help activate it. Any questions so far on elevations? Okay, so I have a video and the video was done before, so you're gonna see white boxes in the video, but it gives you an idea of massing. So just imagine the elevations you see on these white boxes. But this is really just a vision, if anything. Let's see here. And I had sound, I don't know what music they picked out. This again is showing precedence for the architecture. Well, it's really not that good of music. It's kind of elevator music. Urban elements are important on how we, you know, design the streetscapes and everything so people want to walk down Broad, want to be in these plazas. They'll be very important to us on how the design would work. And really, that's your infrastructure as well, the public infrastructure. And again, just to get you oriented, site plan. It kind of sat on this a little too long, didn't it? Guess the music does help the awkward silence, just a little bit. You guys oriented their City Hall courthouse.
Is that a building right there?
Uh, the blue?
Right there.
No, right there.
No, it's uh...
No, up here.
Right here?
Up from your mouse. Right there.
Right here? Yes. You'll see, once it gets vertical, the blue are the parking garages. The purple is the hotel. And the whitish gray is retail, office, residential. The pink that we're showing here, that's actually out of your Bottoms Plan. So this is really taking that Bottoms Plan, laying it down, and then designing something towards the Bottoms Plan that works with the previous work that was done. We are looking at five-story structures that are here. The undulation shown on these buildings is not up to speed with the current elevations, but you're gonna have a very active front escape. Have stuff popping up higher, coming down lower, once we get further into it. But a vision. I don't know if we'll ever be able to get T-Dot to agree to that. That may be tough. Entry into the parking garage. This kind of shows this plaza space. Right now, we have to design a plaza space, but you would have walk-ups over here. Helps the development. The blue that's on here is showing ground floor retail, tile, where that may be, parking garage in the back that's masked by the buildings. Some type of bridge element that we would be responsible for in the MOU to make sure it gets done. And then really reworking all these intersections, and this is the park that Sam was talking about, open up that ditch to turn this into, really is, in my mind, is a game changer for your entry into your downtown. So next time it comes in front, we'll have Alan Jackson in the background.
The preacher or the artist?
The artist. I think it's only got about 30 seconds. We are very excited about the project. I mean, the funding's there, it's ready to go. We just got a lot of work to do to get there. So this is one of our first big steps, is coming to you guys to get your feedback before a MOU comes in front of you, I believe.
Can we go ahead and ask questions?
You can ask away.
The amount of space that we've got off the side of the road to the buildings?
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be one of those situations to sidewalk and, or is there a design that puts up your right on the road? Is there, is there enough room?
Yes.
I know it's three lanes and a little cartoon, but is it, three hours per side? Is it, I mean, do we have, do we still have capability if we just have a decided to want to, or, you know?
Yes, we've set, uh, let me see if I can, uh, go from the beginning. So the basis all the way around here is four, is you got your gutter and then you got a four-foot grass strip and a 10-foot sidewalk at a minimum. And then beyond that, in some cases, we have 18 feet. So one thing we are revising right here, so we have roughly everywhere from 24 to 30 feet to the face of these buildings. This point right here is less and we have to fix this point right here, but we purposefully are stepping back. So we have, we have space that if you decide that, hey, we're gonna revise this and add an extra lane, you can add the extra lane.
So I'm colorblind, I don't see a slip or rail, but I'm seeing building one and building two and the hotel. It looks like, forget about the hotel, I can actually see it, but it looks like there's three buildings, I mean, that one, that one, and then the other one up there with the little key.
There it is, it's on the...
The third and three.
Well, the, on the, the pink color, the one that he has his mouse over.
Oh, you're colorblind, this one right here.
It has the connection point at the third and fourth level in the building.
So...
That's all considered one building?
Yes, all considered one building. You'll have firewalls in here between the hotel because they will be, they need to be separated by use. So yes. So we've designed this in a manner to make sure that, you know, if you did want to go the opposite direction and put a drive in there, we were told front in, to look at that. Any other questions?
Those ratios, 340 apartments, 25 condos, all that, is all that set in stone or can we get some give and take, some more condos, less apartments, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we have the model. This is where we've come so far. We've gone back and forth. We didn't have the hotel in there previously. We didn't have the condos. That was, that's the give and take we've been, we've been doing. So we put a range in there. Right now, we don't have 300, like this plan is not show 340 apartments, it shows like 320. But we need a range to put in the MOU because as you guys know, as we come in here and put, you know, there's a 12-inch water line, we may find, oh, we can't do this, or we gotta move this, it's gonna drop our performa. So...
What are y'all anticipating as the total investment?
Like 85, 85, 90?
We are gonna be seeking some TIF. Once we can make this public, which I'm guessing it is now. We go into our restaurant groups and so forth. So it's been very hush-hush until today, so this is the first time it's out.
Can you go back to sort of, make sure we, make sure I get my head around the mix, part of the mixed use? I see there are 40 hotel reuse, I see those numbers. What about the commercial space, retail space? How much commercial and retail space is there relative to the amount of square footage?
It's about 15, 10 to 15%. Let me get right here. So 340 units, and this is, this is a max number, up to 340 units, a boutique hotel between 40 to 60 keys. The retail square footage between 30 to 40,000 square feet. And what we look at on the retail, we look at retail that, because we're committed to building it, and that is something we have to pay for. We look at where's it gonna, who's gonna lease it and can they lease it? So really looking at those bookends that face those corners, we see that being prominent retail corners. So if you were to take those and put the retail on those corners, it comes to about, I want to say 35,000 square feet is what it hits.
The first floor, quarters at Church and Broad?
Church and Vine, yes, so both of those, yes, we got retail on, well, we got retail here.
Broad and Vine.
Broad and Vine, I'm sorry. We got retail on both of the intersection quarters. So this is all retail right here, and then this is all retail right here. This is probably gonna be hard from an access standpoint from a retail person taking advantage of, or wanting. And then the hotel on the first floor will have some type of retail presence. We don't know if that's gonna be a wine bar, if it's gonna be a, you know, they'll need, boutique hotels, they'll have probably 5,000 square feet of amenity space, but we got a larger footprint and we're just, we gotta do more research to see what the market will want for that first floor.
How long would this project take you to develop? Anticipating?
We would probably anticipate a construction time of 26 to 30 months, start to finish. Including demolition.
And assuming this goes well, we're probably another six to nine months on getting approvals, permitting, all of that stuff. I think we're saying 20, 25 delivery.
So Craig, what are the steps that this needs to go through?
Well, right now, we'll continue putting together the MOU. And that would be something we bring back to council. It'll have some of the information you saw here and as much definitiveness as we can get as far as incentives and things like that. Excuse me, then that'll come back to council.
But this'll have to go through a rezoning, public hearing, the whole nine yards, won't it?
Yeah, yeah. The MOU will just kind of outline the whole project so we have some public buy-in and council buy-in. And then there'll be ultimately a development agreement that will outline definitively with, will be enforceable, that will take up, take up all of this. The, if there is a TIF, which I anticipate there would be, then they'll have an economic impact plan and... The, the, if there is a TIF, uh, which I anticipate there would be, then they'll have an economic impact plan and a lot more documentation.
I see the redevelopment is obviously a good thing that we can appreciate, but what's gonna be the basis for doing a TIF?
We got six hundred structured parking spaces.
And, and there are other elements of public infrastructure that.
Yeah, sidewalks and parks and all that stuff. Just the, the numbers we have alone on the pedestrian bridge and the intersection improvement is about four million is what we're budgeting. And that's numbers from Bell who built her bridge down the road. Um, they, they specialize kind of in that stuff, so. We're talking about a large. If it's a ninety million dollar project, I would say the percentage wise is probably, what, twenty-five percent site and infrastructure, maybe thirty?
What's higher anticipated cost if it's a public private, I mean, are we putting capital into it, or is it, that's just a TIF?
Well, there's, we will negotiate land price, uh, because there is, it's our land, we own the land and, uh, the TIF in the, in the appropriate TIF. You don't do TIF for residential units, you don't do TIF for any of those. You identify the elements that would be subject to the, to the TIF. Because this is incorporating, and it makes a lot of sense from a cost standpoint, things like the bridge. Over, over Broad. I don't wanna use that term.
It is the bridge over Broad.
We use another term.
Harlan Bridge?
Yeah. Some of the other elements that we talked about, including parking garages, which, which will service both the retail, but it will service downtown when we have events and. If we, if we do program some of the, the linear park on, on the other side of the street, you know, provide parking for that. So, so there is elements in there that, that. Would fit within the TIF statute. We're building a park.
Property, right.
We're building the, the park on the other side, yes. Yeah, we, a lot of that's gonna be ARPA funds, we put aside some in the budget, you saw, well, we have to schedule you, but others saw. To get that into place, but there, there's quite a bit of infrastructure costs that will go into, to both sides of those streets.
Yeah, and do we have an estimate on the higher costs?
For the park?
And if, whatever we can pay for?
Well, the costs on that side of the street we're still working on and, and it's still coming together. The park side, we have, uh, the budget amount here and help me on that, what we budgeted out of ARPA for that, plus the additional money we set aside.
We budgeted nine million out of ARPA, but that was just for one phase. I think the total project was around, I'm not sure where Sam went, I think it's around twelve million for the total Town Creek project, that was my understanding.
So we have acquisition costs and things like that, isn't there?
A lot of that, uh, even though that's park, a lot of that also has to do with.
Stormwater.
Infrastructure and drainage, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that's the main expenses we're using, we're using the ARPA funds for that, is because of the stormwater component. So not necessarily all the expenses from phase two will be, um, eligible for ARPA. So there'll be other funds, whether it be stormwater or general fund contribution, that the majority is expecting to come from ARPA.
We're also getting, uh, credits for daylighting that we get to use for our future projects.
I think it may, I think it's a good start. I mean, this is the first time, this is the first time I've really seen. The detail. I think we may have some more questions on. Unit mix and some of those things that, you know, if you have questions, it'd be good to talk to Craig individually about that and, and what you, um, what you see. The, the part that sticks out to me, and this is not necessarily on this project. I don't know, a month ago, we voted to start working on a contract for the property that's on Thompson Lane, uh, two point two million for the office space. And maybe I'm wrong, but based on governmental construction now, besides schools and fire stations. We originally estimated, five or six years ago, the water and sewer building. To be renovated there on the corner and the renovation cost for just the lobby and some security things, it was more expensive than what the building was worth. So I'm not sure that we're not gonna be building office buildings or things like that. I mean, the Vine Street building, where the, where the fire department in engineering, water and sewer engineering is now. I mean, it's used, it's past its useful life on what they can, they can do to it, so, and I just don't, based on the numbers, we're seeing it come back on construction. We're gonna have to go out and find property to buy, existing property that maybe we can redevelop. It's gonna be really tough for us to afford, or, I mean, we can afford it. It's gonna be more economically viable for us to save taxpayer dollars and. Relocate to existing facilities, in my opinion. I mean, we saved how much on the, projected on what we were gonna spend? What did we save on the Thompson Lane building? Nine million?
Ten.
Yeah, so we saved ten million dollars by.
Nine, ten.
Yeah.
To provide some context for this whole process and where, how things would be coming to council. It'll be very similar, but not identical from an approval process and an agreement process. As what the, what the council went through and what the city went through with the One East College development in respect to, uh. Purchase and sale agreement for the land, a development agreement, the TIF approval process. It'll, it'll be, again, not identical, but very similar.
Yeah, so we're, we're slated to submit tomorrow to planning our, or after our planning book. It's gotta go through workshop and we gotta have meetings with all the different groups to get all their feedback and input. But that's why we're here today, is to get in front of you guys, get some feedback. And just so you guys understand, we are, in the MOU, it includes looking at the lot right here and seeing what development opportunities. If it's public items, if it's private items, how that could be facilitated through this process.
What would be the plan for City Hall? I mean, you know, it, it's, I, I thought, I mean. Well. How, 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 just let me just leave it at that. How does City Hall factor into this? The aging of City Hall, the library, all that kind of stuff? How's that fit into all this? I kind of. How's it fit?
Well, well, as far as this project, it doesn't really impact us, except that, uh, we may be looking for some space to, uh, move a couple of departments close by. Out of City Hall, so we have more space within City Hall. I mean, that's, that's something that we're just gonna have to do. As far as the building itself, uh, there's not, you know, just because of the way it's constructed, there's not much we can, we can do for that building. We've talked with the library on different plans of the future, but we don't control that building. You know, it's, it's a library board and. Uh, they have their own timeline to do things, which just doesn't really match with what we need to do. Uh, one thing I was gonna say, we talked about, uh, quite a while ago about the, how impactful to downtown area that One East College will, will be when it, when it gets developed and gets going. This will be equally, if not more impactful, because of where it locate, it's located on Broad Street and how we can really change the whole complexion of that area of downtown as, as people come to our city or through our city. Uh, and I think it will have, it'll engender a lot of changes to the downtown area. It's type of, the mix in downtown itself, because you'll have more people living, uh, and coming to downtown to, to this, this type of project, One East College and other similar projects that may develop around this in the future with some other language we have.
I feel like the redevelopment of this area right here was gonna be kind of a two birds for one stone kind of scenario. It's, I guess where I'm kind of going at. I feel like when we do this redevelopment, we're gonna solve water, sewer, firemen, City Hall space. I mean, I, I kind of had that in mind, that as we're buying properties around here. Just saying, that's kind of, I, I thought that was part of this bigger picture plan.
It was part of it. I mean, when we had talked about it, we had talked about the need to move them and we talked about different areas to move them. And that's where we got to the point, as the mayor just said, once we started. Thinking, well, we can move them because we have space, we can move them over there, but if we have to build a building. As opposed to finding a building now that happens to be suitable, uh, for us and work real well and have a, have a really decent price on it, then, uh, that's what we looked at. But, uh, we, you know, we have some smaller things that we need to do, nothing major like, uh, the Water Resources Department is a substantial building. So, the mix has changed as we develop, which is unusual for something this complex and, and with us kind of integrate what we are. We're not, we're not looking to buy any property around here. What we're looking is, is, you know, on another location with some other property that's come available that just happens to be at a very reasonable price.
It may be worth mentioning your tax basis that you're getting off of this property now versus if it's, you know, if it's city proper, city-owned facilities, you're not creating the tax basis for the city or the county. When you're generating, at the end of the day. I mean. Well. A lot of people.
We're generating a lot of people we gotta serve too.
Well, yes, yes, exactly.
We, we gotta, we gotta expense part of the ledger that we gotta, you know, accommodate with something like this as well, so.
I guess my two cents is, when we think about the vision of driving into downtown, I don't envision a three hundred and forty unit apartment complex as the entry point to downtown. If it was three hundred and forty condos that people wanna invest in, move downtown, walk around and be long-term people, but I don't see three hundred and forty apartments as the vision of the entry to downtown.
Well, we're, we're trying, we're trying hard, this is a mixed-use project, so we gotta have a, a big component. I will tell you, I am on the One East College project, I'm, I'm very. Going on, on the pre-sales of the condos and, um, where they are. We love condos, three hundred and forty condos, it sounds great.
I'm not saying it has to be three hundred and forty condos, but.
Understand.
The mix, the ratio, just add more, add more hotel rooms, add more condos, lessen the apartment aspect and raise the, make it true mixed use, add more commercial space, less apartments. More, uh, deep actual ownership and more hotels, where it's more actual mixed use instead of just apartment-heavy.
If you're, if you're on, if you're on that One East College, it sounds like you were headed down the road right there when we, when we talked about the free sales on those condos.
Well, what.
You think only twenty or twenty-five are available here, that, that makes me worry, because I heard there was a line all the way to Smyrna to get those condos.
Well, that's what I was gonna talk about, that's what I was gonna talk about for a little bit, is some things we learned on One East College. One, um, we do, on the hotel side, we, we learned that it's, it's really hard to get a hotel group in downtown Murfreesboro because. They're competing with the guys on the interstate. And so everybody said, when we went to Chartwell, we went to Vision, you know, we went to the, the main players. That we couldn't get a flag to commit. So it really takes a hotel owner that is willing to bend, willing to be an entrepreneur, because we're entrepreneurs here. You don't have this kind of development downtown, so it doesn't fit the model of the group out of New York that's, you know, not, all they're looking at is a bottom number. You're, you're having to deal with a different group. So when you think of multifamily, like even on the One East College, it's got about a hundred and sixty-eight apartment, it's got twenty-five condos, it's got about thirty thousand square feet of office. It is a mixed-use project, it's got all the different elements, but the grounding source of there is, it works because the multifamily allows them to. Fund a percentage of the retail. And when we talked with, uh, the local realtors on how much office space and how much retail, we did not have any leases on retail or office at One East College. And they're getting ready to pull a foundation permit in two weeks. It's scary. So when you talk to developers, they're, they're gonna be very scared to come in here and say. I'm gonna throw a hundred thousand of retail, not knowing if it's gonna lease. And that's what you don't want, is a bunch of empty stuff. And what we think will happen is, I know Gary's talked to this group here and they're very interested, they, they do retail, that's what they do. If you get the, the rooftops, and, and the rule of thumb is retail always follows rooftops, I think you'll see that maybe it'll spark, you know, that more of a, the development you wanna see. When we look at Franklin and we see where Franklin is now and where downtown Franklin started, you go to Harpist Square Development and you see what they've done there at the river. That is roughly a two, three hundred unit apartments with about sixty.
Think of ninety keys for a hotel.
Yeah, ninety key hotel with very little retail. It's done very well, you know, as it is now. It took it through COVID, like, two years, you know, that it was, it was empty. And then you look at where they took the bank on the square, where there's broken egg is on the first floor, I don't know if you've been down there, but they've taken that building, they updated that with all-new office, it's completely empty. The top floor rooftop grand space, it's been empty for two years. And that's what you're dealing with when, when you say, I want this. That's what the developers, you know, that's the hard part, that's the risky part, is. We know we can, we can build this, we can deliver it, we can provide this much retail. Yes, is there some work in the numbers we can do? Can it completely reverse? Probably not. It's just, it, that's too scary in this time. Right now, as you guys know, interest rates are going up, construction costs are going up. Many a chances, I was scared One East College wasn't gonna happen with, with COVID and, and, you know, that's just, that's reality in my world, you know? We all see these big glamorous projects going downtown, you see the rendering, are, are they built yet? Some. Are hotels being built? No, you know? So I, I guess we're asking, can we go to the next step?
Let us, uh, let's do this, let's put, we'll work on the next, uh, uh, for the next workshop, we'll work on the, uh, MOU. And, uh, put some numbers to it and some more, more definition and then bring that back in, uh. In our May, in our May, our May workshop. And, uh, you know, we can continue the discussion. I think there's more work to do. We wanted to show. You the concept and what we're gonna do. What could, what could happen over there. I think that was important to get that, to get that out. And, um, and we'll fill in the blanks some more and bring it back to you.
I got a comment. Um, I think this is a good start, because it really changes that corridor downtown. What we see now as we drive up is not desirable. We, we keep talking about making downtown walkability accessible and people being, being able to get out and walk around. This starts it. And we gotta start somewhere. Uh, just like the guys said, uh, this is just the beginning. We, we talk about not wanting apartments out on Medical Center Parkway. Why wouldn't you want them downtown? That's perfect. You got people living downtown, you want people moving downtown. You want your downtown to be vibrant. And I think this is a good start.
I, I don't disagree. I mean, I, I think as long as we've all lived here. That Broad Street corridor is probably our worst corridor i- as far as. Aesthetics and. I mean, it just is what it is. I think Eddie, Eddie made that comment back, when was it Rick, several years ago about driving in down Broad Street? It was a nice comment, he, it was in the paper.
I don't remember anything about it.
This is a good start. I, I mean, I, I do agree with the other council members that there may need to be an adjustment in the mixture. You know, I think I agree that if we're gonna do multifamily, it's in a position where this is walkable downtown, because. I mean, that's typically what you, what you see. I, I do think there could be more. Ownership opportunities that are, that are in there, but we had a meeting before this about hotel motels in the city. And I think the number that we worked on, there's fifty, fifty-six hundred rooms in Rutherford County. Out of those rooms, that includes. All of our hotels. And there are many in there that people who are coming to our community would not. Stay in. So we, we roughly have about, yeah, we, we roughly have about twenty-six hundred units that are, are rentable hotel units. And with. A good example, the NASCAR race that's coming in, in May, we have a soccer tournament at the same time and we don't have enough. I mean, we're completely booked up. And with the legacy coming in and you're looking at one and a half times the amount of tourists that are coming to Dollywood. We've gotta get on right now recruiting more flags to be able to come into the community. And I think forty keys, or is that what you had, forty?
Forty to sixty.
Yeah, I mean. I think that's too small, um, but I'm not financing the hotel development either. And I assume you're not asking us to sign on the loan documents, so. It's easy, it's easy for me to say it's not enough, but, um, maybe we should look at the mixture and. Y'all get back with, with Craig and his team and come back with the next steps and then that's where we can really go into the discussion about what's, what's next.
Make one more comment, then I'll shut up. But one of the things, you know, that I've always argued about, whether it's One East College or just generally the downtown area. As it relates to kind of density of the downtown. as it relates to kind of density of the downtown area, is that, you know, there, we don't have in Murfreesboro the focus or the, the density of jobs in downtown. You know, there's NHC, you know, higher, higher office pinnacle up there, there's, you know, a good number of jobs there. I just can't, you know, you can't really, there's not a big office building that houses 2,000 or 3,000 jobs down there, where people can live right there and walk to their job. I mean, you know, the, the thing that just kind of sticks out to me is, I'll just to kind of clarify my comment about the Kilt Two Birchwood and Stone, it sort of just feels like the opposite. You know, we're moving jobs out of the area and moving in people who are gonna have to drive to those jobs. So the whole walkability thing, you know, I, I think, I mean, you know, we're, it's, I see that people will be able to walk to the square and, and, you know, and eat, right? I mean, that's about, maybe, maybe shop a little, but, you know, that's a limited amount, you know? People who are, you know, are they gonna be shopping at the boutique, or are they gonna be needing to drive to Walmart out on the edge of town somewhere? You know, I mean, there's probably an argument for both, but one of those, you have to drive a long way to get to every time. And you gotta drive to get to your job. So the walkability thing, I think, works so much better, and I guess that's why I'm kind of so driven towards making sure we have some job help possibility, you know?
Working on it.
And, and I get, I'm, I'm not the one financing it, I'm not the entrepreneur in the room, but from the same token, you just gotta, we gotta respect each other's perspective on this. I definitely respect the entrepreneur's perspective on it. But you also have to respect the perspective that we're trying to make sure we do something that's right for downtown and a 50-year commitment making for the city of Murfreesboro and how people view the city of Murfreesboro. I, it's, you know, I'm not a big, just generally speaking, everybody knows it, I'm just not a giant fan of concrete, right? I like grass and trees and stuff, you know, green stuff. And five stories worth of concrete that's right off the road, that you can't even see the sun come up over there, you know, that doesn't make me just super excited, just generally speaking. I mean, but that's my own, and I, I don't make necessarily decisions about the city for 50 years based on my personal preference, but, you know, some of the vision of how this stuff comes together is just, you know, I, I'll talk to Craig and Gary about it. I mean, you know, it's, it's, look, I don't, in any case, wanna say that it's, I mean, certainly awesome and nice and starting to think about these kind of things is really dang cool. And I hope we can figure out a way to make it where it's, where it's a good, good vision and a good product for the entrepreneurs in the room.
I agree.
And, you know, the thing that'll really help is bringing, with the restaurants, is bringing people back into town, into downtown for dinner. And that also, it would be a mandate for the persons in the hotels and the 20 million and 10 million.
This will be the last comment, and we gotta move on to our, our other agenda. I mean, Bill's not here, Sean, is that, you're downtown, aren't you?
I'm downtown.
I'm downtown, Rick's downtown.
Downtown.
Ronnie's downtown. The majority of our small businesses in our community are all based around the downtown area. And, you know, Bart and I talked about this in, on WGNS quite a bit. More, the more activity we can bring downtown to help, helps all of our small businesses downtown. You know, we've tried for years to get a coffee shop that has a flag. Not that there's, I mean, I, I was at Brass Horn this morning, I mean, that is a great place for the downtown that typically you wouldn't have seen downtown, but it is packed. But we haven't been able to get people to come downtown for a coffee shop because there's no doors downtown. And anything that we can do to be able to help our downtown community overall helps the entire small business community. So thank y'all and look forward to y'all working the staff. Craig, do we have, is the downtown parking and mobility study progress update something that?
Maybe for 10 minutes?
10 minutes, chairman? Do we have to come back? Oh, we can come back if you'd like, but that's for you guys.
No, I just really wanna get to number seven, I mean, I think that is.
Take that before number six.
I don't want us to run out, you know, run out of time.
We can, we can flex on some of that, the, the end part, we can flex on.
We, we don't have to hit number nine.
It's well done and comprehensive. All the questions are answered.
Yeah, but I, thank you. Let's just do this real quick. I wanna, I wanna do solid waste first.
Yeah, okay.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll go, I'm not saying solid waste is more important than the downtown parking and east mobility. Right now, it is more important, so. Let, let me get, let's wait for a second, let Rick, Rick get in here, because I wanna make, real quick, um.
Our water sewer rate review and that AMS implementation, we, I just brought those in here if you guys want, I mean, it's a repeat from, from, from the years I go, you know, through those recommendations.
If Rick ever comes back, because right now, we don't have a quorum. And Kurt.
I think I have it left, isn't it?
A whip. Legislative whip.
Legislative whip.
Bring them all together.
Can't be shade, so it's gotta be Sean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Had to be Sean.
Sean's the whip.
Sean, you're the whip, you're the only one left.
Whip, I'm the only one left, first back now.
Rick moved to Woodbury.
He'll be happy.
Have Rick, to have a, have a quorum.
Who started this?
I didn't start this.
Did you see who he saw?
Oh, yeah.
That's enough.
Okay, okay. Okay, I probably figured I'd take that.
I agree, I agree.
It's outside. Outside tearing up the concrete.
Tag team. Sean's leaving when Rick comes.
Just like waiting to go to dinner. Is he coming?
You don't have a quorum.
They said you went to Woodbury. Fantastic. No one's, any of those was a glam.
You're not right.
90,000 residents, an unincorporated area of the county. All right, we're gonna move to the review of the solid waste 10-year plan update and the fiscal year 35 pro forma water resources. And Darren, whenever you want me to update everybody on the other items, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I think if they're stealing any, if my presentation steals some of that thunder, I don't wanna do, why don't you, why don't you update us?
So council, the, the big announcement that we found out yesterday, and, and really to, to make today, almost a year ago, when the, when the, you know, the county's going through their RFP process, the city's going through, ours was separate, you know, what's next on our solid waste. We engaged Waste Away, or the engineering for Waste Away, a feasibility study about 12 months ago, is that right?
July, last year, yeah.
You know, and the whole alternative, the whole issue with Waste Away, I mean, I think one is us being able to sustain solid waste independence outside of Middle Point. I mean, that's been our goal, that's one of the goals. The other goal is to be able to get Republic to fix the issues that are apparent out at the landfill right now from a odor standpoint and environmental standpoint. But, you know, we felt like that, as a council moving forward, we had to find out what that next alternative is. And Darren met yesterday with the county and Pratt Industries on one of the proposals, and I think Darren's gonna send some information out, but that Pratt Industry proposal is a great economic development project, but it is not a, anywhere close to being a solid waste solution. It, it's, it has to deal with, with commercial recycling, but ultimately, it's gonna end up being that the city of Murfreesboro or the other municipalities are gonna end up spending seven to eight million in capital expenditures, plus a half a million dollars a year.
Debt service.
Debt service and $2 million a year in operational costs, which, you know, right now is, is not feasible. But with that being said, Waste Away has given us a lot of different alternatives and a lot of different pro formas, but that has always been on them finding a buyer for that material. And yesterday is the first time that they've had in, in this area identified and signed, they had, got a letter of intent signed for a buyer for their fuel. And Darren, you can explain sort of what that means for Murfreesboro.
Yeah, I, I put the Waste Away, I put the, the, the letter from Mark Brown, the CEO there, that kind of, kind of summarizes it, and then the letter of intent from Argos Cement that's based out of Calera, Alabama, which is just outside of Birmingham. But I think, I've, I've got a lot of those, I got a lot of the, the notes, that it's, when I said 10-year plan update, I'm really not gonna update, go over the update. I assume if you've read it, you know, kind of, but I wanted to kind of really hit some of these high points that have happened in the last week or so, and, and just kind of quickly go through that. It's just about 12 slides, you guys know me, I, I can go through this stuff pretty quick. So the options, right? And I kind of gave, a lot of these slides I used with the Public Works Committee meeting that we had last Tuesday, I was invited to them. Boiling it down to three options. One is zero diversion, we just keep transferring our garbage to another landfill. That, the con is, is that we've really got not much control over tipping fees or distance or hauling costs. There's a 40% diversion, which the pro is, yeah, you get 40% material recovery for beneficial reuse, but it requires two container pickup, there's a lot of public education involved because contamination is a killer when you're talking about the public sorting recyclables. The last, the 90% diversion, Waste Away, the SE3 biomass fuel, the con was, could, you know, finding a buyer, getting a long-term buyer for the fuel. That con has kind of been overcome here with this Argos Cement. And I'll say this about the Argos Cement, this is the first, this is the first one out of the gate. This is basement, this is the basement sale price. I think we're all expecting to, to get better pricing as we go forward, but it's a big deal to, to finally get somebody who's signed on the dotted line that they would buy this fuel. So real, real fast, you guys know me, I, I do business case modeling, I try to create these pro formas. You've got expenses, right? You've got revenues. This is on the 0%. Trying to highlight it, the thick, bold solid line is, you know, you got higher control. The dash lines are the ones that you got really, you don't have much control over those expense items. 40% diversion, gotta add contamination fees. You could get some revenue from the material recovery that you sell to someone. That's, one of the cons there is the recyclable market, it's kind of unstable, unstable. The difference, with the 90% diversion, hey, you take away the contamination fees, you don't have to worry about contamination with Waste Away. And I think, I probably should have made that line a little bit thicker, I should have not made it dashed, but you've got a pretty solid control of your material recovery revenue. So what does that look like from a materials management diagram? Well, you guys know what recovery is, I, I explained this to the county, that over recovery, your, your, your revenue exceeds expenses, under recovery, your revenue shortfalls to expenses. So you've got inside the city, county, curbside pickup, what's your, what's the percent diversion, what's the pickup per month? Outside region, is that something, again, that's been discussed, that is not something we want to continue to do, but obviously, it's, it's, it's on the table for several options. And then you've got industry, retail. All these things, you, how many tons per day of it is garbage? How much are you trying to pick up that's recyclable? I say OCC, that's old corrugated cardboard and something, sorted office paper, that's what SOP is. Well, the MSW has to get trucked to a landfill. Recyclables, you can go to a MRF, right? Truck it, run it by rail. If it's clean, it's got a value, if it's contaminated, it's got an expense. But I'm trying to get this boiled down so that people can see it visually about what are we talking about when we talk about these different options? Putting it into a spreadsheet, I'll go through this quick, it's tonnages, annual operating and CapEx, haul costs, disposal fees, expense and growth rates, curbside recycling costs, okay? You can build, you know the spreadsheets, man, you can build them however you want them, go, go nuts. I do sometimes and I, you know, lose, wake up in the middle of the night thinking about them. I know you do too, Rick, and probably you do too, Aaron. So this is, we had our meeting with Pratt Industries yesterday, and these are my major takeaways. And this is in a, I've, I've got a memo prepared that I, I wanna get out, and I wanted to get it in front of you all first today. As, as the mayor said, they offer an interesting economic development opportunity for other county, for Rutherford County, but it is not a municipal solid waste solution for other county. In plain terms, Pratt doesn't deal with trash, totally. They do not deal with trash. They have a business model that is reliant on old corrugated cardboard and sorted office paper. They've got a facility in Nashville right now, that 50% of the OCC and SOP is coming from Rutherford County. So I think they're coming to Rutherford County, because that facility's at capacity, they want that capacity back. They're gonna come to Rutherford County to get this cardboard and paper regardless, I think. And they're just looking for a great site, and it happens to be that Florence roadside is a great site, because it does have rail access, and they're interested in taking these sorted recyclables back down to their MRF in Conyers, Georgia.
But, but Darren, I think it's important for you to chime in here. When we had our meeting a couple of Mondays ago, that's not really what was presented, right?
You're, you're absolutely right. I was a little taken back yesterday, just from the standpoint of, yeah. Yesterday was talking about all clean, sorted recyclables going into that Florence site and no trash. And the meeting we'd had a couple of weeks prior to that with all the county, city mayors and city leadership and, and county leadership, we were talking about trash, and we were concerned about odor, and we were concerned about a lot of truck traffic coming in from out of the county, because that business model required a, a outside, outside region trash. So the meeting with Pratt yesterday, that, that wasn't brought up. So this was all just gonna be a recycling, it's a, it's a pre-processing of the recyclables, and it's a baling operation of, and no trash involved. So that was, that was a different message than what, what we had received a couple of weeks prior. Well, so, and it's, it's really not reliant, this is the other part of it, it's not reliant on single-streamed source separated recyclables, but they will take, obviously, clean recyclables separated by residences or customers and delivered to their facility.
All, all recyclables or just paper?
No, no, they'll take it all, they'll take plastic, they'll take, they'll take single-stream aluminum, plastic glass, uh, paper, cardboard.
Prattwell.
Prattwell, they'll take it. That's not their, they called it their anchor cus, their anchor customer is cardboard and paper from, from commercial and industry. They're not, they don't have to have residential recyclables in order to make the numbers work. Does that make sense? So this is what Pratt is, in my, I'm just gonna go back to my diagram. They cover that little quadrant right there, right? They take recyclables and OCC at a processing facility, and they truck it to a MRF in Conyers. They don't pick anything up and they don't deal with trash. So, that means in order to get diver, well, the question, do we wanna get into curbside recycling? Because that's what it would take, I mean, Pratt is going to require that we provide them clean, separated, sorted recyclables. Mayor already said it, two and a half million annual expense, uh, seven, eight million in, in, in cap, capital expenditures, educating the public to avoid those high contamination fees, and the. the 40% diversion only really applies to those who are doing streams, single stream curbside recycling. So if nobody else does it, then, then that 40% starts to, you know.
40%, 10%.
Yeah, we're 40% of that.
We're the only one who's doing it in the whole, at all the 30 municipalities that are sending trash.
Right. If they're not doing it, then we're the, and we're, the 40% drops, yeah, 10, 12, 15, we do the math.
Council members, that's really the concern that, you know, on the recycling, not knowing what the current situation with Middle Point is, and this is the tough thing, and I think Smerton and Laverne would agree with this, you know, there's, it's going to be really hard for there to be curbside recycling in the county, just because the density is not there to be able to pick up trash, you know, on Given's Road where there may be 30 houses, you know. But the issue, looking at the fiscal impact with Pratt in the municipal resident, is that you're talking about 7.45 million in, you know, you're really talking about $10 million is what you're talking about in some kind of investment plus an ongoing expense, that really that diversion rate will go down and it just extends the useful life of Middle Point for other trash to come in.
I went back to a study that was done at some university, and I looked, it was back in 2018, I didn't put it in here, but they're saying, you know, yeah, you can expect between 15 and 25% contamination, just because we're just, we don't know how to recycle, and especially in this area, us coming out of the gate, I'm sure that would get better over time, but coming out of the gate, I'd say just estimate 25% of this stuff is going to be contaminated.
That's what I was going to wonder, with, you got people, the vast majority of people have never been close to recycling, so is that number a lot higher than 25%?
It could be, it could really, I mean, I would say when we first start, if we don't do a good job educating the public, yes, they did have, they had, they had some quartiles up there in the 40% range, when I looked at that study. So, yeah, this is, I'm saying 25%, it's kind of average of what those, those study looked at, we would probably be on the high end.
This doesn't include some cost of education, which will be a cost to that.
Will be a cost, absolutely.
On Facebook, and all of a sudden everybody's going to be, you know, we're in the 10% quartile, right?
Yes, yes, we, we, I did not add, and I don't know, and I say this in my memo, that there's an unknown cost associated with the public education component, and there's an unknown cost as to the, to the contamination component, right?
Yeah, how much do you, how much do you have to pay to get it now from?
Everything I hear is that the contamination fees are exorbitant.
Well, and I think Mike Nolan told us this when he was still employed at Rutherford County, that the recycling that they do at the convenience centers, I think he told us that like 90% of that ends up going to the landfill because it's contaminated recycling. That, I mean, I remember that in a.
That was in a, so I know, I remember that too, but I think that was a bunch of people contributing to that recyclable pile, so, I mean, you only need one out of the 50 people that put into that box to contaminate it, to contaminate the whole box.
One of the big things are those little plastic bags you put your groceries in at Kroger's, apparently that stuff is worthless, and if any of that gets into your plastic recycling, I mean, I think the county has pickers, they got guys going, employees constantly picking out garbage bags because those little plastic bags, because if they're in there, it's considered contaminated, because it's bad, it's not very, it's not high quality plastic.
Or a piece of pepperoni stuffed in a taco.
Oh, I was told the other day that somebody does actually recycle cardboard that has had pizza in it. Donna said that, I don't know where they, who does that.
Even milk still left in a.
Yeah, yeah, right.
A milk jug.
Well, that wax, the waxy, the waxy cardboard, you know, if that's worth anything, anyway.
We're getting.
I know, sorry, sorry, let me keep going, it's fun to talk about.
Thinking about that chunky milk.
It's, it's, you know, I'm saying, man, I've learned stuff every day, trust me. So the good news, Waste Away, they got a, they got, did get a preliminary design phase contract for a million bucks in Kern County. That happened an hour before I went in front of the county Public Works Committee. Got a text from Mr. Webb over here that said they had just approved it on the public works agenda, so I was able to go in and tell the county that it finally landed a design. So, great news, we got that letter, from a letter of intent, 104 tons per day, 10-year period, $57 per ton purchase price. There's also some, some, some really great news about renewable fuel standards, there's a new pathway that's open, and I, I went to the EPA website and tried to follow this stuff, and it's, 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 it's concepts, it's probably like trading futures in the stock market, I'm not sure, but it's kind of a, they will take sorted MSW and you can produce renewable natural gas, we can put in a pretty small capital investment and get a very high revenue, a $2 million annual revenue off this. You get compliance credits, it's called RINs, renewable identification numbers, it's a, it's a credit used for compliance and currency for the renewable, or for the renewable fuel. You can get into long-term purchase agreements available, federal government, and they pay you about 10 times, you can, it's based on, I guess, dollar per gallon of diesel, you can get 10 times what you would, you're getting 10x, they're subsidizing 10 times that unit pricing that you could buy it on the open market. So, I don't know as much about that now, I'm sure I will learn more, but that's just another big revenue stream that this Waste Away facility, I have not factored that into any pro forma at this point. So Waste Away does this, right? They do it all, they do the MSW, they don't, they don't do curbside collection, and they don't do, you know, they don't truck it and bring it to the, to the, to the transfer stations, but this is the other thing, I think it's a very important thing. They don't have to have the OCC or the paper, they can do, you could do, I mean, if you wanted to do it, you could do Pratt and go curbside collect and put all that stuff and have them haul it to Conyers, and that would not affect the, the output of the biomass fuel that Waste Away produces. So you could do, you could do both if you wanted to. The obvious benefit of Waste Away is it's one container, one pickup, we're already incurring that cost, and they'll obviously take the paper and the cardboard and turn it into fuel. So, this is kind of the history pathway, real quick, almost done. So in 2019, Waste Away gets the Comfort Leonard that says their fuel is equivalent to coal and wood. We contract with them to get a feasibility study, that was last July. Yesterday, we get Argos that provides us a letter of intent to purchase the fuel. So what's next? I am bringing it up today because in the next 60 to 90 days, I want to come in and have the design contract started, to design the Waste Away facility. I think the letter of intent, that we've got a long-term buyer that's willing to accept it, justifies taking it into the next level of design. And that's, you know, that's a seven-figure number, but I still think it's, if we really are looking at four to five years of the, of the landfill closing, we've got to get moving. Now, again, I'm not saying we start building it, we'll have to get the contract together and execute that, that contract before any type of building happens, but I do think that it would be prudent to move forward, and I just kind of wanted to warm you all up to that idea so that when you see it coming in the next two to three months, that you're not shocked.
Darren, you may have done this throughout the presentation, but to get, to, I don't have it formulated in my head this way, so, you know, to try to get us a comparison of what, you know, so I saw the cost about the curbside recycling and all that kind of stuff, I haven't understanding what that looks like, but I mean, do we have, as it relates this Waste Away, what, what point in time do we need to get our hands around, our head around? Look, here's what it's going to be, if we transfer station, you know, full out transfer station, and everything, it fills up, and we do everything just like we have been doing it, which means we got to build a transfer station, we got to get semi trucks to contract to get it down to Waverly or whatever, New Johnson or wherever that is.
So, this is a, this is a contract operated transfer station, this is if Waste Away, and this is conventional landfilling. So I've got all those pro formas built, and not that they're perfect or good.
The general idea.
But I've got a lot of numbers that I'm throwing in there, so this, so yeah, and then you can run the scenarios, right? Then you can say, if this, if that, what if, and then you can start charting it out and see what's got a better recovery, what's.
Save us some time and effort and brain power and your best guess scenario, right? So I know you've run a lot of what ifs, and that's great, and we, you know, that's always something we appreciate, but for today, to get to the designs part of this, I think, I think executing where you build a facility, everybody better have these numbers memorized, right? Do a lot of what ifs, but for today, just get to the design piece, on your best guess scenario, what you think is most likely, what do these costs kind of look like, you know, if we do Waste Away versus if we do full transfer station, ship off to wherever?
Well, I got to re, so cap, you're talking about CapEx, the capital expenditure?
Kind of both.
Well, I've got all that in here, so I can say, again, don't want to go too weeds here, but, you know, I had a $25 million transfer station now, I don't know, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that, and that was, that was transfer plus the recycles, and that's as though somebody would come in and build it. Now, Pratt changed that game on me yesterday because they're not dealing with trash, so I don't, they said they would have an $8 million investment on, on their stuff, so that may be high, and I'm looking at an additional, you know, 1.7 million operating costs. And again, a lot of this boils down to the curbside service is another two and a half million, I mean, so, so, curbside service, two and a half million.
Let's scratch that, I'm just talking about, because if we, so we can go apples to apples, right? Because we want to be doing curbside if we do Waste Away, correct?
Right, that's right, that's right, right.
Keep it all in one box.
You want another monthly fee?
No, I mean, I guess.
Well, the cost to the city, it's going to be, it's.
We can sell this power to Argos. I mean, is that going to make it to where the cost, is it cost effective thing to build Waste Away? I mean, we don't need to go through all this and spend much money on design.
Yeah.
If it's going to cost us 30 times more, and in the end, nobody's going to buy into it.
Well, Waste Away is a little different, because I do have, I do, you, as the more you, it's a, it's a, it's a manufacturing system, so when you put more through it, your expenses, you expect to go up because you're going to be processing more of it. Let's just say the, so I've got it where if we just do the city, it's almost equivalent, two and a half million, curbside recycling, recycling to do material recovery, let's say, 40% diversion, you add the curbside recycling, round that up to three, three and a half million if you got bad contamination, 2.5 million if we bring in another 100,000 tons outside of what we do, then you're up to six and a half million, but then you're generating revenue. I mean, that's the other thing, now you're, you're charging people to come in and paying for a tip fee for you to process it, and you're getting that revenue on the backside where you're getting people to buy it for fuel. So it, it's the only scenario that I, that I ran that where you actually do see an increase in, the more you bring in, the higher recovery you get.
Waste Away is.
And the landfill is probably the cheapest, except for, well, let's see, I've got an $18 million transfer station, and I put in about 875,000 in extra annual expenses just for operating the transfer station. The problem with that, and I, Rick, you twisted up here, but, no, it's about 30, it's anywhere from 20 to 40 dollars a ton to haul it to another landfill, either if you do use truck or rail. That's where it gets real sketchy, is what's the tipping fee at that other landfill, what's that hauling cost to that other landfill? And, you know, that's like this, if Middle Point closes, Camden may go from a $45 ton tipping fee to a $60 ton tipping fee, because they're all, now they're the only spot for everybody to take it. So I can give you a rundown on the operating expenses, I, I see each scenario going through, just believe that I'm way down this rabbit hole on this situation, and I can, I can try to summarize it.
Really big picture. What you're saying puts us in a position for the cost to be better or worse to the taxpayer?
Better.
Okay.
That's what I needed to hear. That was, I'm sorry, that was about engineering brain getting in the way.
But the more, I mean, I think.
One of the ways that we, I'm sorry, but one of the ways that we did look at this, because of all the variables that are involved, is we said, okay, if we, if we do Waste, if we do Waste Away, and, you know, the plant gets built and everything else, does it involve a fee, assuming that at some point we charge a fee where we're recovering and it's operating as a, as a enterprise fund? Is that fee reasonable for taxpayers or fee payers, rate payers? And using, what we try to use is what are other people paying around, you know, for private service? I mean, what, out in the county, you got to hire somebody, and what are you, what are you paying for that? And the answer came back is generally yes. I mean, there's, see, all these factors change that a whole lot, but if you look at a more or less worst-case scenario, which is what we tried to do, you're still in that range, you're okay. And, you know, the problem with Camden and everything, this is kicking the can down the road, kicking the garbage can down the road, I suppose, because those things are going to close. And so the advantage that Waste Away has is it's kind of, it just continues on, and if there's always a buyer, and, and we have the LOI, but nobody's resting on their laurels on this, or Waste Away is out looking for other people to buy it too, because the more you put in there, the more output you get, the more you can sell, and the lower the cost goes down, so they're just going to keep, keep at it. It makes, it does, it continues to make really good sense along these lines. Now, is there places that get stepped up, or is there any guarantees? Not right now. So you got to kind of take the step to be able to get there and, and get comfortable with that.
Rick, I'll say I ran a ton of shit. Everything lands between that 20 and 30 dollar a month range, regardless of if I was trying to, yeah, where we were beginning. I've, I've, I've said we haul it to a landfill in Alabama by rail, we truck it to Camden by truck, I mean, we sell it for a dollar per MMBTU, we sell the fuel for $3, I mean, we bring in 100,000 outside tonnage, everything lands between 20 and 30 bucks a month.
Well, I mean, you know, this isn't even, and you, you know, you haven't said it, somebody will say eventually, I might as well say now, I mean, this doesn't even take into account whether or not this is, you know, the right thing for the environment, the future path for all this stuff, I mean, all those things, this is, if it's the same cost, it's, you know, you probably got a pretty big incentive to do something like this anyway, right?
Again, I haven't even factored into this, this RINs number yet, yes, and so, yes, this has the best, the smallest carbon footprint, the least amount of greenhouse gas emissions, we're not putting more trucks on the, on the, on the streets.
What about six miles away odor?
No odor.
How does it do on that?
No odor.
Yeah, and Darren, we've gotten so in the weeds over the last, really, year on talking about all this, that, you know, this allows us to not have to rely on somebody else's trash, it doesn't, it doesn't, it helps us not to have to rely on a landfill that not only are there future ramifications that our kids are going to have to deal with in Murfreesboro, I mean, this takes care of all that.
Right.
You know, the two things that when we were working with the county and going to the Public Works Committee, I applaud the county commission, I mean, I think that the majority of the county commissioners understand and see what's going on, and getting through all the politics, you know, and all the campaign stuff, I mean, this is just about, Darren summarized it last night, and we were, we didn't get this letter until last night.
It was like four o'clock.
You know, this is a right and wrong issue, this is not a, you know, and so, looking at what's happening out there, looking at where we could be moving forward in the future, I mean, Darren is already, we had talked to Mayor Cooper in Nashville last Friday, and just from that conversation, Darren's already meeting with their sustainability director, because this really needs to, this, this option could be a regional, you know, Nashville may want to do the same thing where they're providing fuel, but then on, on top of that, I, I know Waste Away's got several people who are coming down there over the next, the next few weeks, TVA's coming back down, down there, you know, so getting away from all the outside trash, no outside trash, I mean, we still have to figure out what we're going to do with our solid waste, and this is a huge step to be able to say, we have our next, we have our next step.
It's, it's a big deal, in my, I mean, my mind, I think it's cutting edge, and I think the diversion is the highest you're going to achieve, you know, from any option, so environmentally, it's, it's, it's the best. TVA's coming down tomorrow to talk with, their, their engineering team is coming back to talk with Waste Away tomorrow, and then I think, and I can't remember her name, Mike, but it's the Assistant Public Works Director for Metro Nashville, she's coming down April 21st to tour the plant. Works Director for Metro Nashville, she's coming down April 21st to tour the plant. I, I, I just feel like this, 2019, they got the comfort letter, and I think COVID delayed them for two years. I just think that's gonna start, it's gonna really start, you're gonna see more and more of this happening.
You better put that, that schedule back up so we know what we gotta do next.
Well, I don't, I don't, I think the next step, just, I didn't put timeline in here because I, I need to get with Waste Away, the architect, the engineering, and just figure out how long it's gonna take to structure the next design contract. So if it's a $45 million facility, yeah, you're gonna, well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna say, one, I mean, if you do a percent, a 4% of 45 million is 2 million. So, um, I'm just, I don't know that's what it's gonna be. It may be a million bucks like in Kern, uh, but this is getting down to getting it, getting it ready, getting it, getting the plans ready. We got the site out there off Joe B. We've got a transfer station that's probably 75% complete. I'm gonna go talk to those architects and say, look, we just need to repackage this and, and, uh, for, for what it would take for a Waste Away footprint.
And Darren said it several nights ago, there, there are too many things that are happening for this not to be, I mean, you know, a letter coming in before the public works. This is all starting to fall into place. I mean, part of this is, and I'm not trying to pump the council members up, but, I mean, the council members went out on a ledge or a limb and spent the money not knowing what was gonna come in, and it's come in.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we, at the meeting on Monday with the other municipal mayors, and I feel confident Smyrna, Laverne, and Eagleville are more than willing to, you know, participate in, in what's next. But, you know, the thing that we heard, well, there's, you know, really, I think there's three options. We have to find out, or three paths. We have to find out what we're gonna do with our municipal waste in the future. That's this path. The second thing is, we've got to figure out what we're gonna do with the disaster that we have out there right now. That's, and Darren's been in multiple meetings on how much we're spending on a lot of stuff out there, but that's path two. And then the third thing, which we really don't have anything to do with, is what the county overall is gonna end up doing with their existing landfill that's out there right now. The county has really been working on trying to find a solution for item one and three. So what we're gonna do with our, our waste and what they're gonna do with our landfill and how you combine those together. And, you know, I think Waste Away was asked, can they use, if they were to mine that landfill, can they use that material for energy? And you can't do it. So there's not really a good option on, on one and three, putting those together, unless that option is allowing another landfill operation to come out, come in and mine, and mine that landfill out and then start filling it back up again. And the council is just gonna have to at some point make a decision on whether we are okay with another landfill going out there. In separate of the new landfill that Republic is requesting on the 100 acres, are we okay with filling up the airspace of the existing county landfill? And that's a whole nother discussion. But this is the step that tells us on the three-prong approach, what do we do with our solid waste next? And here's, here's that. The other two are gonna be future discussions.
Well, sometimes you gotta spend some money and invest money to get good options.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to, I mean, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, but, I mean, look, I.
There's a lot on the line.
I mean, that's exactly right. I mean, it's something I think I'd be willing to take some pain for. It's easy for me to say that right now, right? I get that, but, you know, this is one of the things that I would take pain, even if I had an election in front of me or whatever, that, that this is one of those things that seems to me that just makes sense to be able to say, hey, look, this is worth millions of dollars on to figure out if we can do something that's gonna get rid of up to 90% of our trash, turn it into energy. I mean, you know, I've talked to you guys individually a little bit about being the greenest cities in Tennessee.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, that's, uh, that's something that I believe will bring good economic development opportunities and stuff like that. This to me would just be just some ginormous leap above me on what every single other city in Tennessee is doing that, that I think will put us at the top of that right, right away, so.
Set the standard. I mean, it, it really will, I mean.
There's risks.
Yeah, there is.
You know, Argos, there's, you know, yeah, there's a lease, there's a contract, but bankruptcy happens, you know, whatever, so there's risks, but, um.
Well, there's several, trust me, there's several other, there, there's several, there's, there, there, they're really, I, you know, they won't even tell me some of the stuff they're doing. They're really out there trying to get, get, uh, get some focus.
Darren, I know you weren't asking for this, but you've got four council members here. Would, I don't know if you need a motion for this, but would, would you?
I don't think.
Adam, we're, we're leaving you out of this conversation. Let me, let me rephrase it.
She let me say.
I, I stand corrected by a, by a former city attorney.
Just, all, you didn't let me finish, Adam. That was Ashley sitting over there.
I'm gonna get a name tag.
Didn't get to finish, and I was already told no. I, I think what would be great is that, even if it's a nod that, you know, you're not hearing any dissenting voice, but to be able to start moving to those next steps. And if that means to start working on the process of a design contract, I don't think you have to have a motion to do that, but, I mean, we need to start the process of, of moving along.
Right. So I, I, I think the expectation is, we'll, we'll put that together. I, when you, I just wanted, when I put that proposal in front of you, I wanted you to not see it cold. I wanted you to understand that this is kind of how we're going. I think getting that letter of intent warrants moving to that design level.
Is anybody, I, I don't, I don't see Kurt shaking, I see everybody else nodding.
Do you think it'll be a waste town up there to keep working on this? I don't.
You didn't fill out about the last project, so. I mean, I think you can go ahead and continue working, but we do need to find some kind of solution. We don't want to be hung out to dry. But also, I don't want to waste 40, 50 million dollars neither. So, so.
Where are I going there, yeah?
Well, whatever it is. I'm just saying whatever it is. So I want us to be very careful, and I don't want us to be the guinea pig to start this show running. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm in agreement that you can go ahead and continue to look. I mean, we hadn't signed anything, we hadn't done anything, so it's fine.
All right, so Darren, are you now wanting to go into the tenure update?
No. I don't, I mean, I don't, this is kind of the update. I was, I figured I'd take this time, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well.
It's like, uh, the, the tenure, what, what the tenure update does is I attached it as, as an attachment. It basically just documents the fact that the county is kind of pursuing potential path with Pratt. We were kind of pursuing a potential path with Waste Away. I did throw some numbers in there, kind of, you know, we anticipate the cost to be between that 20 to 30 dollar range. So it's kind of a boring read, but it just, I, I, I put it to update.
The tenure update is something that we have to, we adopted that two years ago, is that right?
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's something we adopt, we're adopting every year to really update not only Rutherford County, but TDEC, what our solid waste plans are. But has anyone, I'm asking this to the council members who are sitting here, so Darren can hear this, has anyone changed their stance on Middle Point being an option for our solid waste moving forward? Right? Okay.
It, that's a great point. This plan does reinforce the fact that the city does not see Middle Point or any new landfill next to Middle Point as a viable option for our future.
I think it's important to note that, Darren, and maybe if you would relay that to our, our county partners, and like I said, the county commissioners have been great to deal with. I think it would be important to relay, as they look to vote on their updated plan, that we are solidly against Middle Point being in that, that discussion.
Great. Uh, I have sent this to Bishop, the county solid waste director, so he has a draft version. I will re, I'm gonna, I may send that out with my meeting notes to say, from Pratt meeting, also attach the tenure plan to the county and say, also, you know, based on this draft update. So I think the next step with that tenure plan update, though, I would be coming back to you all for a formal approval to adopt that.
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, if, I think, based on what you were just, you pulling the council in terms of whether, um, to Middle Point or another landfill as an option, if you wanted it to be reflected in the minutes as opposed to nods of heads.
Okay.
That would be something that would be appropriate, because this is a regular meeting, to be brought up in a motion and voted on.
Do you have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
A second. Ms. Brown, this is a motion reemphasizing that Middle Point is not a part of the city of Murfreesboro's intent or future in our solid waste plan moving forward. Please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McCarland?
Aye.
All right, um.
You go. Bite the apple. Ashley never gives you a second bite of the apple, this. You wanted a motion, you got a motion.
That's right. Sorry, Adam, I didn't mean to.
That, that's quite all right.
All right, um, the city works asset management implication, I guess, here's my question, what's more important, that or the downtown parking and mobility? We've got about 20 minutes.
Well, that's AMS, that's Darren. We've had enough, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You want it? Come on, Greg.
Yeah.
We'll make the introduction short.
Thank the members of the council. November, council approved the proposal from Neil Schaefer for the downtown parking and mobility study. The purpose of the study was to help the city understand current parking needs, enhance east-west mobility in a downtown area, and help staff plan for future development in the downtown area. In an effort to maintain communication, staff has recommended Neil Schaefer present their findings today. With that, Mr. Greg Judy and Patty Clare will be doing the presentation, and we'll, we'll be happy to answer questions after.
Come on up here. Mayor, council, thank you. Impact fees and items on your agenda today, I see y'all have got, bless your heart, a moment, so I appreciate your all's time, and we'll get through this as quickly as we can. Again, my name's Greg Judy, who manages our Murfreesboro office here. If you remember back in November, December, we came before you as part of our contract approval to kind of give you a, a practice of what we'll be doing as part of the study. So talking with staff, we wanted to just give you an update and some insight of what we found, really through the data collection and just our initial kind of assessment process. Patty Clare's with us today, and she's in our Louisville office that leads, helps lead our community planning services. And so we're gonna bring Patty in and let her kind of go through some of the information that we've already presented to, to staff several weeks ago, and then just invite any feedback and any discussion you'd like to have. So Patty, if you'd like to go for it, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Greg, and I appreciate your time and know you had a packed agenda. I want to make sure that you're seeing the schedule on the screen.
Yeah, we're good, Patty, thank you, yeah.
Okay, good, good. So we are, we are here presenting a kind of a wrap up to task one and task two. And it's the existing conditions analysis. And as your first, your second item on the agenda talked about the historic bottoms, we began our analysis by really understanding your vision for the community and where you sought to go and building on the adopted documents and really looking at a mixed use downtown for Murfreesboro. The study is really two parts. It's a downtown parking study and an east-west mobility study. And what this slide shows you is kind of the downtown focus area, so the downtown parking focus area. So we took a subset of the larger study area to really look in detail at the parking and what's available today. All of the analysis that we've done and the data that we've collected are digitized into a geographic information system, and it is a space by space, looking at public parking that are on-street spaces, lots, and structured public parking, and also looked at some potential new parking areas. So today, a little over half your parking in downtown in that area is in, for public, the public is in structured parking, which is a good ratio. That's what you'd like to see. On-street parking makeup makes up a little over a third of your spaces, and you have just 10% in off-street parking lots, which really kind of detract from your walkability. So you want to keep that percentage low, which you do. And you only have 3% accessible. You have 200 more spaces that will come online as public parking within the One East College garage and development. Today, you know, you have two kinds of time restricted parking, time restricted limitation park, parking. You have 748 two-hour spaces, and you only have 30, 30-minute spaces. So the vast majority is around the public square and moving outward a little bit from that, and those spaces are your two-hours parking. We found that you do have existing paid parking in your downtown. These are private lots. One lot is, has hourly parking available for the public, and the other lot has monthly leased parking available. We looked at occupancy from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The highest kind of density of parking and the need in, in Murfreesboro downtown right now is during that lunch period. And so from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we took two middle-of-the-week days and looked at your occupancy and your turnover. And this slide demonstrates kind of the high occupancy and high turnover blocks, really hugging around the square there. This slide indicates where you have low occupancy and low turnover, that number one on Vine Street is kind of an anomaly because of, you only have three spaces in that block, so you can take that one out of the mix. But it kind of shows you, you're on the edges there. We looked at wayfinding, and Murfreesboro really downtown has very little wayfinding signage that directs you to where to park. It's really at the portals to your parking garages, and so it's kind of almost non-existent. We also are documenting the kind of lighting conditions within your surface parking lots, looking at the perceptions of safety, because people will park where they feel, they feel good about. And so nighttime, during the winter months, it gets dark so early, and we kind of looked at each parking lot by parking lot of what the conditions are. And we'll have more data on this during our next phase of work. So with all that existing conditions and a good understanding of that, we had limited public outreach during that phase. We had some conversations with the Main Street Association and city and county agencies, and we kind of will move into a broader outreach. But there are also some kind of preliminary goals that we have kind of, you know, feel like that where we're going in terms of who we talk to and the data that we've gathered makes sense for downtown Murfreesboro, and that's managing your parking demand, making parking really easy to find, enhancing the perception of safety, and encouraging that turnover to support retail businesses and business services, and using that parking to really catalyze and promote development and to reach that mixed juice vision that you have adopted. One thing that is gonna be very helpful to you, but by doing this study and digitizing all that information, your layers, that information now, Murfreesboro can take the step of, of making it a public-facing kind of information so that, that people coming downtown to Murfreesboro, they know where the parking is, they know what, you know, what's available and where it's available. And through Google Maps, Apple Maps, Waze, and Parkopedia, things like that, it's very useful to really to begin to publish that data, and there's some easy steps to do that once you have that data in hand. Wayfinding is a really big part of a, both a downtown branding, but also kind of articulating where you can get to destinations and how you can park so that you can go to those places. And so this is just an example that we have done elsewhere in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, to, to really kind of articulate the downtown and, and articulate where that parking is. So the next step, we have some strategies that we'd like to further explore. So the next step, we have some strategies that we'd like to further explore, given where we, what we found out thus far in the existing conditions analysis, and that is really to target employee parking and figure out where opportunities to, for employees to park, to free up some spaces around the public square. To expand short-term parking, we have some initial public input saying there's really no places to really have that quick turnover of parking spaces, and evaluate if paid parking is some place that Murfreesboro would like to use, and what the advantages or disadvantages would be to that. Given your goal of increasing residential downtown, we think that you should consider a residential parking permit program, and we have some ideas for you to chew on on that. And we also think that as you dig it, the market develops and gets a little more robust in downtown Murfreesboro, that some special purpose zones could, should be considered, such as ride-share pickup zones, hotel valet zones, and things like that, so that you can layer in and be prepared, something you might not do tomorrow, but it could be down the road. And I know I spoke really fast, and I hope I didn't sound like Alvin the Chipmunk. The next phase, we are really going to be reaching out to more people and really talking about their kind of perceptions of parking demand, and talking to the Main Street Association, to retail businesses, residents, churches, parking attendants, and institutional users, and we would love your input on any of these categories or more categories, and so that we can make sure that we talk to people that we need to talk to in this process. Like that? Greg?
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
If you go to the next slide, I'm going to pull an audible, and if you go to the next slide.
Oh, you want, oh, okay.
Yeah, we had some slides, the second phase of the project that we mentioned was the east-west mobility, and I think I'll just briefly touch on that, and we can answer more questions if there's interest, but the other component to this was trying to, enhancing, I guess, the mobility of folks that want to come east-west through the downtown. We know the north-south, as you work out of the square area, as you move north, has pretty streamlined streets as you move, you know, North Clark Boulevard, but east-west, there's some challenges and restrictions as far as just the ebb and flow of movement through there. So we're using a data-rich kind of a technology platform called Streetlight, which is a data service that uses Bluetooth and the mobile data to kind of track how folks ebb and flow through the downtown area, and we're able to kind of zoom in and extract just general patterns of movement of drivers, and so what we want to be able to do is track that information and be able to get a sense of what today, what people are, how people are accessing the downtown, and what that might mean for trying to identify specific corridors and action items for improvements to improve not just vehicular mobility, but kind of complete street or pedestrian movements, and how we might be able to kind of focus on those improvements. So Patty, if you can go to the next slide, this is just a quick kind of sense of what kind of the data, this is the platform and dashboard that's being used to try to siphon and better understand the data. I can't see where you're sitting, but we kind of established nodes, and we can actually track ins and outs and the movements through that kind of yellow area that you see around the downtown area. The next slide. So this is where I'll end, this is what we want to speak to. So right now, we're at a higher level of trying to understand, the I's means for internal, E's external, so the internal, external, external, internal movements, and so forth, this kind of pie chart describes kind of what the data is showing as far as some of the trips are coming in and out of the downtown, and we'll be able to, from a positional standpoint, try to be able to track that and have a better understanding where we might focus potential improvements, capital-type improvements, to better enhance and foster the continued redevelopment and kind of changing land uses as we've been talking about a lot today. So more to come on that, but that's kind of where we're at with it relates to some of the east-west mobility, and as Patty described, our next kind of phase would be to start interacting and interviews and then just getting input from some of these stakeholders that Patty described. So either today or as we move forward, you know, we welcome y'all's input on that, and, you know, again, our next step is really to get into a preliminary evaluation and come start, you know, we're already starting to see some of the kind of light at the end of the tunnel of possible options, and as Patty described, there's some strategies that we'll want to investigate a little bit more, and we'll bring that certainly to the staff and then back to council as we get toward the latter half. We are kind of positioned to have this pretty much taken care of as we get into the June, kind of early summer timeframe, so that's kind of our timeline going forward. So certainly appreciate y'all's patience and time today, so we're happy to answer any questions, or if there's any guidance that y'all have, we'd be absolutely happy to take that, but again, just appreciate your time and to work on this with y'all.
All right, we've got tenure plan done. Weight on the water pro forma and City Works asset. You've got, I think we had a warrant beer permit, is that right?
We have ownership change for a restaurant at 2625 Medical Center Parkway. They've met the requirements, and they've completed building and codes inspection, so staff is ready to issue the permit if approved. We've also got a special event permit for five dates for Oakland's Association at the Oakland's Mansion.
Second.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business, more statements?
Yes, sir.
Any other business from staff?
You have on, in front of you, the major project index. Really, the purpose of that is just to identify different projects if you're not familiar with them. Hopefully, it'll help you, direct you to the right staff so that you can get the information, or you can, of course, always call me, and I'll get you the right person. So look that over, and we want to do that probably once a month and give you just an index of things that are going on in the city, or projects that we're working on as a staff level, so that you can ask questions if you need to.